Thank you. Good evening. Hello. Welcome to the Wolfboro Zoning Board of Adjustment for March 4, 2024. We have one case tonight, a variance application. We did a site visit. I'm Audrey Klein, the chairman. We've got Suzanne Ryan, the vice chair, Sarah Silk, the clerk, Chuck Sumner, member, and Luke Freudenberg and Sebette Strowman, our excuse tonight. So I'd like to ask Kate to sit in one of their places. So that means we have a four-member board. And so I would like to offer the applicant the choice of hearing a four-member board case or waiting until we have a full board next month.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just appointed her as alternate.
Yeah, I thought you were going to recuse yourself.
Well, not yet.
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to read my clerk thing.
Yeah, okay. So Kate's going to sit for Luke. Would you mind reading the minutes from the site visit?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. CBA viewing 3424, tax map and lot number 242-7, case 03V24. Members present, 3:30 PM, Audrey Klein, Chair, Suzanne Ryan, Vice Chair, Sarah M. Silk, Clerk, Charles Sumner, Kate McMahon, alternate, excuse, Sebette Strowman, alternate, Luke Freudenberg, member. Others present, Randy Walker, Attorney, Diana and Rocky Kleiborn, owners. Randy Walker pointed out four stakes located on the mound formed by a no longer functioning septic system. He explained that the home had been connected to town water and sewer. It was clarified that the stakes mark the outside of the drip edge, not just the foundation. A red stake on the far left was identified as a boundary line with the abutter. It was later explained that the boundary for the abutter is three feet from the Conrad's building. The one-car garage will be 30 feet from the street. Efforts had been made to keep the building as far as possible from the shore. The tree line is divided with hemlocks on Conrad's side of the line and the remainder of the trees on Kleiborn's property. The garage will be 10 feet from the sideline. A bush blocking the proposed garage entrance will be relocated. A larger deciduous tree will have to be temporarily moved during construction to preserve it. The large tree on the lake side of the garage will remain. Several questions were asked about roof drainage. A mound to the left of the garage is possible if required and whether the shoreline permit needs to be revisited. Note, unplanned state's garage was part of an original permit approval. Restrictions to the location of the garage were noted. Water and sewer lines under current driveway. Underground electric serving this lot and Conrad's, which comes diagonally from the lot's front-left corner by the street and angles in front of the right corner of the proposed garage, follow a parallel path to the water and sewer lines to the house, respectively submitted Sarah M. Silk, CBA clerk. And at this point, Madam Chair, I'd like to say that I feel that I should perhaps step down because Dale has three clients in the neighborhood that are abutters. And I just don't want there to be any question.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, I have a question. Do you work for these, this applicant?
Not the applicant, but we do three out of the seven abutters. So I just feel like I would like to step down, so there's no question.
Well, I don't think it's necessary. There's no financial gain or loss between you and the applicant.
I understand why you might choose to recuse yourself, though.
Yeah, I'd like to keep the same high standards I ask of others.
Well, let's say that doesn't set the standard.
Higher standard.
Forward.
No, it's not. It's always a personal choice if a member wants to recuse themselves for really any reason at all and any reasonable reason. So that sounds reasonable to me. So how would you like to proceed? I guess I need to open the hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing.
We'll proceed forward. We don't want to wait at all. We wish Sarah would sit, but if she feels she cannot, then we proceed forward.
Okay. Anybody have any questions before we ask the applicant to present their case?
No.
You're on.
The questions will come after he presents.
You never know. You never know. There might be one before.
So, thank you. My name's Randy Walker. I represent Diana Kleiborn, who is the trustee of the Diana G. Kleiborn Trust, which owns the subject property, which is located at 163 Clock Road here in Wolfboro. The property consists of a small, substandard, but grandfathered lot, 0.37 acres in size. So it's one of the smallest lots on the lake and has about 106 feet of frontage on the lake and about 60 feet of frontage on Clock Road. A survey was attached to the application that shows the dimensions of the property, where the proposed garage is on the site, and the utilities. When you were there, you noticed that there was a fair amount of ledge, so there are topographical challenges. And we also pointed out that there is underground electric, underground water, and underground sewer in three different trenches that pretty much run up the middle of the lot, which is one of the reasons that the garage can't be put there and is set over to the side. But you'll also notice that they put it as close as they could to the underground electric. It's two or three feet off of that. They didn't want to obviously impact that directly. The proposal is to build a one-story, one-car garage as near as the road as possible, but setback 30 feet from the road, so it's fully compliant with the road setback. The garage, as proposed, will be 10 feet away from the Conrad boundary line. That's the southwest side, which is 10 feet into the sideline. You do have a letter from the Conrad saying that they have no objection to this. Mr. Conrad is here in the audience and would support that, that despite the fact that the side setback is really there in part to protect his property and encroachment, they're perfectly fine with it. We did notice that the Conrad house was also a little closer to the line on the waterside, which had been approved by this board in the past. So let me get to the criteria. So number one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, and I quoted the Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook, and I did quote the November 2019 Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook, which, a little outdated, but it's been my go-to for a number of years. And just to make sure that was accurate, I did look at the 2023 Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook, and nothing has changed in the four years on a variance application that would impact any of the quotes that I had. But I did go back and look and actually brought it with me today. So the 2019 and the 2023 version indicate that for the variance to be contrary to the public interest, it must, quote, "unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance, such that the ordinance violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives." To determine this, the handbook suggests that you ask yourself the questions. Does the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? It will not. Or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare? And again, it will not. Now, this property is located in the shorefront residential district, which, the goal of which, the purpose of which, is to maintain the integrity of the existing shorefront residential district and protect the shorefront from overdevelopment. And this one-car garage will not cause the residential shore district to be overly developed by any means. The garage will be set well outside the 50-foot waterfront setback. It's about 135 feet back. The project is otherwise compliant with all setbacks, except for that one side on the southwestern side. And the application, given that the garage is residential in nature, it will not change the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. I'll note that the Conrad house to the left, if you're standing on the road, is a two-car garage. The Peterson property to the right has two two-car garages. There was one right up against the property and then another one. They actually have four. And if you go up the street a little bit more, there is a barn that's quite big. So bottom line, it will not alter the essential residential character of the neighborhood, but rather is in keeping with it. Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, again, as noted in the Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook, this factor is related to the first criteria. And it basically says if the proposed construction, you know, will alter the essential character of locality or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare, that it would be something that this board should deny. As we've already indicated, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Let me just jump sideways on public health, safety, and welfare for a sec. It was brought up at the site visit that drainage may be an issue. I thought that was a very legitimate question to raise. Both the applicant, as well as myself, have talked to Randy Tetra from Norway Plain Survey that drafted this plan, and he indicated that they had already obtained a permit for the house and the garage back in the day, but that had expired just recently and that we therefore will need to submit a permit by notification, a PBN as he called it, to notify the state that we're going to do this. Because the total square footage is being disrupted as under 1,500 square feet, he said it's just a permit by notification. Also talked to the applicant, and I'll represent that we are happy to put a berm on the downhill side of the garage and put in either gravel or peystone or something like that to catch the drip line. So it'll not only have a drip line that's stone-based, as well as a berm to catch any water that may come off the garage. And I thought that was a very receptive comment by the board. So for that reason, we won't threaten the public health, safety, or welfare and have a drainage issue. And given that the garage will be minimally visible from the lake and will be used for the storage of a single car and personal property, it's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Number three, will substantial justice be done if you approve this? And the Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook suggests that perhaps the only guiding rule is that the loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. And here, the loss to the applicant, pretty clear, they would lose the ability to have a one-car garage. When the Kleiborns were using this property seasonally, they didn't really need a garage. Now that they're year-rounders, it makes much more sense to have a car inside, particularly in the winter for the reasons that are all obvious. But in essence, the substantial justice criteria employs a balancing test. And so the question is, although they'll benefit them by having a modest one-car garage, what does it do from the public standpoint? And there's no gain to be gathered by the general public by enforcing the strict terms of the ordinance, particularly when the neighbor whose property that sought to be protected has no objection. And then four, will the value of surrounding properties be diminished in any way? They will not. This is a modest, one-size garage. Obviously, the bigger the property, the bigger the garage you can have. This is a small lot. We understand that. They're not asking for a three-car garage or a two-car garage, just a single, one-car garage. And I think that's consistent with their small lot. They should have a small garage to keep it all proportional. But there's no indication that there's any diminution in the value of surrounding properties. You should have a letter from every single one of the neighbors and then some saying that they not only had no objection, but they did not feel that their property values would go down in any way and that they were supportive of the application. And then number five, little enforcement of the provisions will not result in unnecessary hardship because there's special conditions of this property which suggest that you can grant this variance. And I would suggest that there's four. Number one, we have one of the smallest lots on the lake, 0.37 acres. It is a tiny lot. Number two, it's exceptionally narrow. It's only 60 feet out at the road, and that in and of itself, I think, is a special condition. The third factor that's a problem is the underground utilities. We have the electric, water, and sewer run right up the middle of the property. And then the fourth is topographical challenges, which is basically the ledge that's on-site that limits where they can put the property, put the garage. So I believe there's four different special conditions, any one of which I think would be sufficient. But when you add all four of them together, I think that makes it fairly easy that this property is rather unique. And I'll also point out that if the lot were flipped 180 degrees, that if we had the 60 feet that's on the water was on the lake and the 106 that was on the lake was on the road, the setback is only 10 feet, and that's all we're asking for. So if the lot were just flipped 180 degrees because of that switch. But the ordinance says if you've got over 100 feet on the lake, you've got to have 20 feet. And so we're asking for a variance. And the special conditions that I set forth, those four special conditions, when they apply, there is no fair and substantial relationship that exists between the ordinance and the specific application to this property. As noted in the Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook, the answer to this question that the board should be asking is whether the restriction on the property is necessary to give full effect to the purpose of the ordinance or can relief be granted without frustrating the purposes of the ordinance? I believe that the answer is yes to both of those. And is the full application of the ordinance to this particular property necessary to promote a valid public purpose? Once the purpose of the ordinance has been established, the property owner needs to establish that because of these special conditions, the restrictions applied do not serve the purpose in a fair and substantial way. And again, the neighbor whose property would be encroached on has no objection. There's still a good buffer between these properties. You saw that there were aubrey trees that are already there. There's a line of hemlocks that are there as well that provides nice buffering between the two. And because the goal of the district is to maintain the existing waterfront property, that if you drive by in a boat, I surmise that you cannot even see this garage. It was tough to see the lake except way out. So if you're in, you know, going along the shore, you won't even see this garage because it'll be blocked by the house. The garage is fully compliant with the waterfront setback. It's 135 feet away, somewhat uncharacteristic. Most people are trying to build their house closer or their garage or buildings closer to the lake. In this case, they're pulling it as far away as they can. And one of the advantages of that is that there'd be less driveway, less disruption of soil, less impervious area that they have to deal with. So we don't believe for those reasons that there's a fair and substantial relationship to enforce this. And then lastly, is the proposal is reasonable. While the use is residential in nature, virtually all the neighbors have garages. As you drove out Clock Road, you saw garage after garage after garage and house after house after house. We're asking similarly to have one. Again, the neighbor on the left's got two, the one on the right's got four. And they have a modest, one-car, one-story garage on a small lot. It's a small garage on a small lot, we believe, appropriate. And we would therefore request that this board approve the request for a variance as submitted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, as would the Kleiborns, if you have any.
Yes. Right into your microphone.
Thank you. Could you say something again, Randy? Back a few minutes ago, when you were talking about the permit that had elapsed, and would you just kind of say that again?
So my understanding in chatting with Randy Tetra was that when they built their house, they had done a complete drainage plan, house site, got all the permits, built the house, had a garage potentially to go up in the back, but never built it. Again, they were out of state, is using its property seasonally, didn't feel they needed a garage. Now they've come back in for a garage. And that that permit, I believe, was good for five years. But Randy had indicated it has just lapsed very recently. But in any case, he did indicate that we should submit a permit by notification to the DES. Neighbors get notified, et cetera. And we're happy to do that. Plan on doing that. I'm representing that we will do that if this application is approved.
Okay. So that's just a notification that's needed?
That there's no what?
It's just a notification that you need to do to the state?
Yeah, it's called permit by notification. I mean, the state can always reject it if they want, but you basically say this is what we plan on doing, given it's fairly minor in scope, that the state can reject it if they want. But it doesn't go through the normal formal process.
Thanks.
So that's the note at the top of the page. There's a block at the top of the drawing, and it speaks to a 16 by 20 with overhang. Part of the original permit approval, see note six. Shoreland impact permit approval, town of Wolfboro, case 2019-20892019. So what you're saying, alls I have to do is update that with the state with this permit notification?
That's what, Randy. It's not my strength, but he indicated that they, given that the permit that they had and that, and we brought up, you know, the legitimate question the board had raised, that he said, yes, we should submit a permit by notification to get another state.
And who does that go to?
DES. Yeah, goes to the Division of.
Tavis had his hand up.
I was just going to note, the case 2019-26 asks the town shoreline permit did not include a garage. So it may have been shown as a future garage. It may have been shown on the state permit, but did not go through the town. So this applicant would need to go back to the state, likely receive the permit by notification since it's outside the 150 feet, probably not going to raise too many eyebrows at the state. But then they'll need to update the town shoreline permit and get a building permit, which, if the variance is granted.
Actually, I think this garage that's being proposed is a bit smaller than what they had previously thought of.
We could make it bigger if you'd like. So we could make it bigger if you'd like.
Yeah, you can go up to the number that's at the top of the page. All right. And so you mentioned about talking to Randy about the drainage, and can you repeat that again?
Sure. So the Kleiborns had planned on putting a berm down that side inboard to the hemlocks, no matter what, to catch any water that may come off the roof. Randy Tetra, in addition, had suggested they put in what's called a drip line, which is basically a row of rock, you know, a peystone, we'll say. Just make it up two feet wide, maybe four or five inches deep to run along the swale to catch the water. He said the berm is usually sufficient without putting a drip line in, but in the wintertime, he said it can cause problems, and he recommended putting in stone. And I believe that the Kleiborns are perfectly content with that. And again, I'm representing that they plan on doing that. If you want to make it a condition of approval, we're happy to have that be a condition of approval because that is their intent.
Can that, you're talking about an engineered plan from Randy, then, for the drainage?
Yeah, I suspect it'll be whatever is submitted to the state. It'll probably be identical to what we submit to the state.
So just from my standpoint, looking at the grade there and looking at where it naturally goes downhill, it does go off the lot in the very corner. So it's, and then you're going to slope away from the building before you can go up for that berm. So I think it's complex enough to want an engineer's design of that, in my opinion.
It looked to me naturally that the water would flow out to the street if we didn't do much.
That's right. It flows out to the street.
Exactly. Again, away from the lake, which is really what we're, would be more concerned with.
Well, after it flows out to the street, it goes into the lake.
So what Randy suggested, and he's familiar with his property, that, he said he'll never get there. He said the soil should absorb it, literally, if you just did a berm just parallel with a garage.
He's the engineer. I just, I would like it to be not just kind of off the cuff, but, you know, a plan that somebody's standing behind. Yes?
There's a pending zoning amendment that would require an engineered plan.
Right, but that's not now.
Well, he's also looking at the coverage. He's going to be increasing and have to do an engineered plan anyway.
Oh, okay. That's what I was asking on the site because I, but that's not gotten to public hearings, so it doesn't impact this case, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I like the standard, though, for this case. Do you know what I just said? Do you have any questions?
No, I didn't catch what he was saying.
An engineered stormwater plan will be required if they proceed.
Stormwater what? Plan. An engineered stormwater plan, engineered, not just made up by a non-engineer.
For the building permit.
For the shoreline permit.
Shoreline.
For the shoreline permit. It's not on the warrant yet. It will be on the warrant in '24, I mean, '25, sorry.
No, two weeks.
Oh, it is on the warrant. Oh, I'm sorry. So it does, it does apply.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's required under the current regulation. It's more strenuously required under the pending regulation.
I didn't need to say all that, then. I have a couple other questions.
Sure.
Are you all set with yours? So it says 106 by the shore, and the shore is drawn as a curve. Do we know what the straight line is to actually figure what's required for the sideline setback? It could be 15 and not 20. I don't know that it makes a difference, but...
So I hear the question. I don't know the answer. What we were provided was that plan by Randy, but if it was 15, then we're only looking for a five-foot variance. But in either case, we'd like to build the garage 10 feet off the line.
Right.
Either way, but that would be helpful and would make the granting of the variance even easier.
So Audrey?
Yeah.
I was curious about that, too. So I measured it pretty carefully on the plan that was provided.
Yeah?
And that the straight line measures 106 feet if you scale it. So it's still over there, but you're still within only a few.
The difference is so minimal that it's not going to, okay.
Exactly.
If we get down to 99, it would be 15 feet.
See, the two engineering brains were going with the straight line. There's one really big tree directly between the proposed garage and the shore. Is that going to stay?
There were no trees inside the flats.
No, it's towards the lake, but I didn't know whether you'd be able to build without taking that down. And my question was, if that comes down, would you be able to move it back if there was no ledge and then therefore move it over a little bit?
but, you know, a plan that somebody's standing behind. Yes.
There's a pending zoning amendment that would require an engineered plan.
Right. But that's not now.
Well, he's also looking at the coverage. He's going to be increasing and have to do an engineered plan anyway.
Oh, okay. That's what I was asking on the site, because I, but that's, that's not gotten to public hearing, so it doesn't impact this case, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I like the standard, though, for this case. Do you know what I just said? Do you have any questions?
No, I didn't catch what he was saying.
An engineered stormwater plan will be required if they proceed.
Stormwater what?
Plan. An engineered stormwater plan. Engineered, not just made up by a non-engineer.
For the building permit.
For the shoreline permit.
Shoreline.
For the shoreline permit. It's not on the warrant yet. It will be on the warrant in '24. I mean, '25, sorry.
No, two weeks.
Oh, it is on the warrant. Oh, I'm sorry. So it does, it does apply.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's required under the current regulation. It's more strenuously required under the pending regulation.
I didn't need to say all that, then. I have a couple other questions.
Sure.
Are you all set with yours? So it says 106 by the shore, and the shore is drawn as a curve. Do we know what the straight line is to actually figure what's required for the sideline setback? It could be 15 and not 20. I don't know that it makes a difference, but...
So I hear the question. I don't know the answer. What we were provided was that plan by Randy. But if it was 15, then we're only looking for a five-foot variance. But in either case, we'd like to build the garage 10 feet off the line.
Right.
Either way. But that would be helpful and would make the granting of the variance even easier.
So Audrey?
Yeah.
I was curious about that, too. So I measured it pretty carefully on the plan that was provided.
Yeah?
And that the straight line measures 106 feet if you scale it. So it's still over there, but you're still within only a few feet.
So the difference is so minimal that it's not going to make, okay.
Exactly.
If we get down to 99, it would be 15 feet.
See, the two engineering brains were going with the straight line. There's one really big tree directly between the proposed garage and the shore. Is that going to stay?
There were no trees inside the flats.
No, it's towards the lake. But I didn't know whether you'd be able to build without taking that down. And my question was, if that comes down, would you be able to move it back if there was no ledge? And then therefore move it over a little bit?
We said that we were going to keep all existing trees, not moving them around to the side.
Okay.
They're trying to keep all existing trees, except for, I'll say, the bush
Yeah, right.
On the driveway side, which they'll try to move that, which is a pygmy something, and I can't remember the name of it, but I should know.
I wasn't concerned about that one. It was the one further towards the lake that I had a question about.
If they can save it, that is their plan and intent.
Let's see. So I guess the snow storage would be taken care of, Tavis, in the, in the plan that's going to the town?
Correct.
Okay. That's pretty much all my questions. I just want to say, I appreciate the neighbors' letters, but in a variance application, their opinions can't be weighed as part of our five criteria. Never hurts to have them, as Randy knows.
Thank you.
I just want to make that clear for everybody else who's watching. Sometimes, you know, they don't get that part. That's all I have.
Well, let's go through, go through the five criteria. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because I wrote some outfinding effects, too. It doesn't alter the essential, I'm going to put one and two together. It doesn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
How come?
Or threaten the public health, safety, and welfare. And...
But why? Why? We need a reason why it doesn't.
Well, I think if you keep going, you'll find out why.
Okay.
Because the integrity of the shorefront residential district, as far as it is, as far away, therefore, as possible, without violating front yard setback. The application will also not alter the essential residential character of the neighborhood. So the crux of that is, it just does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, period. You don't need to write a book.
No, but they, they ask why.
We do the findings of fact after we make the decision on the five criteria. That's when you find out what the facts are, because you've gone through the list.
Okay.
And the facts are derived out of the decision, of the decision.
That's also an opinion, but...
No, it's not. It's the way we've been doing it, and it's the way we've been told to do it.
I mean, the opinion that it doesn't alter the essential character of the neighborhood is based on because everybody has a garage, because, you know...
We get to that when we put the facts.
Okay.
You know.
Fine. What?
It makes sense to say, to me, it makes sense.
Well, I haven't finished, because it's one and two together.
Go right ahead.
So the second part of that would be, the garage will be mainly visible from, not visible from the lake, and will be used for storage of a single car and miscellaneous personal properties. And it's consistent within the purpose of the ordinance. And then we'll get to what the purpose of the ordinance is when we get down to one of the other criteria.
Ah. Okay. Let me continue.
Three. Well, you want to ask if anyone else has anything?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay.
Your honor, roll.
Three. Substantial justice is done because the loss to the applicant would overweight any potential gain to the general public if we did not approve this variance. There is also no gain to the general public by enforcing the strict terms of the ordinance, given the specific fact that the, the lot is so small. And it's small and it's irregular The value of, four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because the use of the property will remain residential, modestly sized, code compliant. And although this is not relevant, it is proposed to be aesthetically attractive. And none of the, none of the surrounding properties in the immediate neighborhood will have any diminished value. Actually, the plan, the drawing of what they proposed to, to build is quite nice, the style, with the coupler on top. Five. Little, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because .37 acre in size is one of the smallest on the lake. And it's unusually narrow, having a width of 106 feet. The lot is also encumbered by underground water line, sewer line, utility line, and has a topographical challenge significantly reducing options. I think that number three is, number five is really the crux there. Owing to special conditions of the property set forth above that distinguish it from other properties in the area. One. Relief can be granted to this property without frustrating the purpose of the ordinance. And then I'm going to get to the purpose of the ordinance. Because of special conditions of the property, the restrictions as applied to the property do not serve the purpose in a fair and substantial way. The purpose of the ordinance is to maintain the integrity of existing shorefront residential district and protect the shorefront from overdevelopment. And that's a key. Put a little asterisk by that. The purpose of the garage is fully compliant with waterfront setback, far away from the lake as possible while still complying with a front yard setback. The side setback is to ensure virtual, virtual separation between neighboring buildings. The size, shape, and topography of the applicant's lot make this difficult. Two, A2. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it's residential in neighbor, residential in nature, with similar uses in the neighbor, neighboring properties and in the area. The applicant-proposed garage is therefore reasonable in scale and consists with the neighboring viewscape.
Do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add, other than I think it's, it's architecturally, it's a good solution to a problem with, you know, a number of constraints. And they've done a nice job of putting in an appropriate-sized garage onto the site. And I don't see any reasons why we should not approve it.
I think the, the fact that it's encumbered by the underground utilities is a very big reason why I would think there's a hardship on this lot.
Yep.
And that it's pushed towards the road as much as it can go without violating the front setback.
That, I think, I think when we do the findings of fact, we pick out the primary overriding reasons why we would do what I'm about to do, which is to make a motion to approve.
Was that a motion to approve?
I am going to do it right now, with your permission.
Please.
Move to approve a variance under Chapter 175, Section 64A2C for Case 03V24, Tax Map 242007, 163, Clock Road, for Clayborne Trust, for a 26 by 24, one-car, one-story garage with personal storage, encroaching into the 20-foot setback by 10 feet from the side lot line per September, what date is on here? September 23 plan. I don't think there's a day. It just says September 23 plan. And then the...
2724.
I got right here. Okay.
Add front yard setback dimension, 2724.
All right. Scratch that, September 23. Make it 2724. And that, the boilerplate items, number one, the notice of decision shall be recorded to Carroll County Registry of Deeds. Applicants shall be responsible for the payment of the recording fees. Two, the variance shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of the final approval, or as further extended by local ordinance or by the zoning board of adjustment for good cars. And the minutes will reflect, or should we make it a condition that we are going to require the engineering plan?
It's already a condition based on the, the warrant that's applicable right now that's being voted on next week. They have to meet that because it's gone to public hearing.
Okay. So...
But yes.
But yes, what?
That I, do we, let's add it as a condition. What if that fails? Wouldn't we now then need this condition anyway?
Looking back at the 2019 plan, it's a condition anyway, because the shorefront residential requires projects that have in excess of 20% impervious require an engineered plan. That's in the books.
This is an excessive 20%?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought in the beginning, but, okay. Good.
That was all I had.
So I'd like to second it with one correction. You said 26 by 24. It's 26 by 14.
It says 16 by 26.
It says on here, 26 by 24 on the plan. And I referenced the plan date, so that's what's going to be used. Where does it say 14?
So it's 20...
I'm sorry. I had eye surgery and I can't see.
Hopefully Sarah's doing the driving.
So correct that measurement.
It's 16 feet.
With the overhangs.
With the overhangs.
With the overhangs, and then 20 feet long. So it's 14 feet with a foot overhang on either side. So the outer perimeter of this, 16 by 26, just so we're all clear. And thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Thank you.
So that's my second.
All in favor?
I got a, did you second?
I did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
So now let's do some findings.
Okay.
And let's not, let's not write it like a long letter.
I don't, I have not made findings that are a long letter. This case is very simple. We only need, we only need three. We don't have to do one for each section even.
No, no, we don't. We just do the overarching reasons. And the one about...
The lot is narrow and irregular, and it's encumbered by underground utilities.
Underground utilities.
So those are, those are two.
Special conditions.
And...
Compliant with waterfront setback. I think that's important to know for future reference, and that we're paying attention to the waterfront.
Do you want to add in the minimum, minimally visible from the lake?
Well, yeah, we could do the two together. Minimally visible from the waterfront and compliant with the setback.
You getting this?
The recording is.
Okay. So we've got three. Lot is narrow and irregular. Two, it's encumbered by underground utilities. And three, it's minimally, it meets the shorefront setback and is minimally visible from the lake.
Right.
I think that's...
And when you put about the regular, it is a lot, put topographical, too?
It's narrow and irregular, and it has topographical features. Yeah.
Yeah. That wraps it up pretty good, I think.
I think so, too.
That wraps it up pretty good.
Yeah, that's enough.
And you guys have minutes.
Yep.
And I was not in the minutes, so I'm not going to, you want to run the minutes?
Madam Chair, could I just make a comment? I am impressed with the minutes, and I'm impressed with the fact that they print them both sides. I was equally impressed, but in a negative way, that all of those pages that we got in our packet are single-sided. It's such a waste of paper.
Ah, yeah.
And I'm not certain who does the copying out there, but we've mentioned this before. We get it double-sided for a while, and then it's single-sided again. And by the time you multiply it by all the members, it's a lot of paper wasted.
So noted.
In any event, I have moved to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
As printed.
As printed, yes.
Can you, can you say the date?
February 22nd, maybe, Chair?
Thank you. February 22nd, minutes.
In which case I will second it.
Second. Oh, go ahead. And then...
Well, we have to vote.
Yep. Vote. All in favor? Aye.
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 I forgot I'm doing that now.
To accept the minutes as written.
And then, just for, just for the, just for the record, you have a copy of the notice of decision or findings of fact or something I probably gave you, one, Audrey, from our last case.
Notice of decision.
I don't know if I do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Notice of decision, yes.
Yeah. For the record, the notice of decision has been filed on the Kent case, February 22, 24.
Yeah. Also, just for FYI, now that we're still doing it early to when we do a viewing, I am sending the clerk's report of the viewing electronically to the secretary to be attached to the minutes and copying the town plan. And you guys get a hard copy.
When you say you're doing it early, I was going to ask for us to do the viewings later in the afternoon, because it's lighter later, and it's hard for me to get here from work.
No, I know that, but currently I can get them to her.
Okay.
And, and I did talk to her and tell, tell her that I would have to stop when we do them just immediately prior to the meeting. I don't have time to go home and use the computer, obviously.
And Tavis, when we have daylight savings, do switch our viewings to the later hour?
I will go as late as you'd like.
That's next week, I think, that the daylight saving is...
March 10th.
March 10th. And then it's also lighter, so...
So we start later. I forget, it's like usually like...
Six.
Six, yeah.
If we have one.
Huh?
Yeah. It depends how many we have.
Well, it depends on how many there are and how far apart they are.
Say that again. Let's say not sooner than six.
Correct.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.